Yeah. Jamie, uh.
Correct.
How is it?
Yeah.
Oh, McCrory.
Oh, McCrory. Yeah. Yeah.
I had to say probably already.
Oh, boy.
Certainly, that's the best way to do it.
Um.
It's like a drum.
Yeah.
I'll make, uh.
My first time.
Yeah.
But I love it.
So. I had somebody try to open up. Well, not try to.
Okay, so I'll make a motion.
The reverse way of shooting.
The twenty-third at nine.
And. Things are things.
They're not coming back.
We need to really get a message.
The big second.
And then the school is, is we think you're doing.
That's right. Okay. Next second.
Their third was to say, so they can get charged.
Yeah, must be mad.
And they have deposited to the bank.
Oh, feedback.
Well, so both parties, and then it was the exact.
You had great, uh.
What was it?
You can, they gave each other.
They could do it.
You can. They're like, I keep going down there. At least to have what to do. And you still need to do it without looking deep into your brain and house for the.
I'm around.
I was so fired up. Can I get a free gas for that? Wasn't it like seven hours ago? I was so pissed when you were doing it. But then I did. He was so. Sorry. I don't know if it was like that. They were much better.
I've had about twenty, twenty-five people.
Yeah. So, yeah. I think that's what I'm hoping to do.
Yeah. That would have asked for.
That and, um. George.
My eyes are still asking.
But she knows they're all like, oh, damn. Because Jamie's like texting, she's like, can you hear me? When they go like, ah, I'm like, okay. So that's what it is. They're all hoping for this.
There's a queen teaching. They talk about these students. And like they like infiltrate that.
I love San Francisco.
Or like how they're crucial to see that it's a pretty interesting. Which is a total glimpse of how to speak. Pretty good, so.
I'd like to be right over there.
Right on.
What? Because I smile.
If you front and hold it. It's not completely.
Oh, but that's needed.
But red and green.
Okay. I'll probably get it.
Mr. Osborne, how are you?
I'm okay. Is this a permit that was moved from the other room or?
You're asking. I don't know. I showed up, but it was all.
Showed up.
It has to all.
I'm sorry?
All pulled over from the other room. Except a lot of layers in the handout, like, are.
It's my question. Thank you.
Well, thank you. For sure, but I couldn't have imagined having two sets of this. Would not.
And, uh.
How old are those?
This process reminded me of how much fun it was to set this up.
We're gonna have this. This road.
I like that scene.
Sure.
Well, I just set up the chairs. Um, but this part took me at least three or four hours. Oh, someone moved their props for me, so I guess it's somewhere over there. Then I got stuck in the office and Steve got rolled over first. And Kevin and I put it back together. I've never anticipated that. You know, when we want to take this apart, it would be very crowded. Yeah, I have to clean off the floors. Getting a little bit nicer with these and all the check phone. Cut all the zip ties and pull the cord down. So maybe don't look at your under your feet because they're both hanging.
You know, you know, there are zip ties.
Oh, I had Velcro once, but I.
They do.
I didn't think I'd ever. Tonight, whenever we set it up in the other room, it will be Velcro.
You already said anything in there?
Uh, there's an A, any of our children here? But we got tickets now tonight. And, uh, there's CDOA there tomorrow, so it has to be.
Let me get this made.
Four days.
Back here, it wasn't. I'm.
You're talking to, if you want to speak to it, it's all in my.
Sure.
Want to, which way are, do, which way are video?
I'm hearing you can sing better. You could just sign in or just.
I don't think we're gonna speak. Just gonna be your council. Give them some photos.
Where do you live?
Fifth Street northeast.
Okay.
They haven't met in a while.
Wait, the fight all by, and he come over. He's standing right up there. What's his name? Matlister Jamie.
Eventually meet him.
If they're sitting on their spot, right there, you're sitting.
You have to pace, um.
Behind a computer.
Otherwise.
Close.
Well, we turned that super. But there's others. To beautiful, to beautiful, to beautiful. We talked about. I have. Patrick's. Very good. We do to, uh, more agents myself. This is, yeah. Just to spare them more information. More people. Can you tell me, I mean, what's happened last year?
I'm not the one that answers. Okay.
I think, uh.
You don't have to sign up to speak, but, um, Shannon here is our court reporter. We just want to make sure she spells everybody's names correctly.
Okay, yes, they're signing. Thank you so much.
Hopefully, we will spell.
Yeah, I'm good. Probably been, yeah, you haven't been at the one.
Yeah, but it's probably been a few weeks since.
Good seeing you.
Yeah, good seeing you.
And I'm not playing. The last one. Don't anticipate anybody submitting.
If we need to. I can close by.
Yeah. Looks like a. Yeah, yeah. So. I don't know.
I was just worried.
So now we go back to them.
This is.
You're covered.
Hey, what's up? Yeah, it's all.
I got you. It's always a long time. How are you doing this?
Yeah. I think it all. Be real smart. Thank you. Yeah, I were planning to pack that. He had to drop. Or. I saw. Yeah, that's why. I'm. Yeah. Has. Yes. You. I'm sorry. As you. Please, uh. I'm sorry. So you might feel. You might. Yeah. All right.
There's any more questions?
Why was she? She's all.
No, it's not. It's too many. It's. You put down these.
I don't see my part.
In the dream. Huh? No, I haven't seen it. And my water.
Four, five hours.
I don't know.
Wow. Yeah.
What kind of thing is that?
I don't know.
Uh. I think it's all right. It's all right. You know, it's.
Something. Yeah. Yeah. Hmm. That's right. You want to see that here, but. My charity. It's so.
What is this nice looking group?
For now.
Sure, I think we might have to get rid of that.
Is it?
My best guess is that they're. Trying to turn that.
Do you want to take mine from there? Because I think we're gonna get feedback.
Just turn it off. On the back.
Back.
Oh, back. I heard that. Didn't listen.
Was it good?
All right. We ready? And now called order, the public hearing in May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. The time is six thirty-six. Ben, would you please call the.
Member Cleaster?
Here.
Member Lyra?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Stroy?
Here.
Member Vol?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, at this time, we'll begin public comment on, uh, the public portion of the public hearing. Ben, would you read for, uh, read the title for the record?
An ordinance amending chapter eleven thirty-six Main Street Districts' regulations of the codified ordinances of the City of North Canton, specifically accessory uses as listed in section eleven thirty-six point oh-five, in order to add thereto gasoline station as an accessory use requiring a conditional use permit in the Main Street North Gateway District.
Okay, as Ben said, this is the gas station as an accessory use. Um, at this time, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-two? Okay, same now. Yes, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-two?
Tucker Osborne, three oh seven Third Street, South East, North Canton, Ohio. My comments tonight are in opposition to ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-two. Should I start over here?
Yeah.
Tucker Osborne, three oh seven Third Street, South East, North Canton, Ohio. My comments tonight are in opposition to ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-two, which seeks to change zoning code for the city's newly created Main Street Gateway District to permit a gas station. North Canton has discouraged gas stations on Main Street and rewrites its zoning code in two thousand and three, twenty-eighteen, and most recently, just last year, in twenty-twenty-one. The proposed zone change would, would never have been contemplated before Meyer expressed interest in the purchase of the former Kmart property. A sale to Meyer will allow city officials a way out of the mess they have created for themselves when they embark on issues of what is termed land banking. Earlier this year, events surrounding the city's twenty-twenty purchase of the Kmart property were shared with me by well-known developer Dan Dehoff. Dan told me that when the Kmart property was put on the market some two years ago, he and Bill Lemon were interested buyers of the nine-point-five-six acre Kmart property. They entered into a purchase agreement with the sellers at that time for the purchase price of three-point-one million. In the course of Dan's recounting events to me, he provided me with a copy of their development plans for the property. I have a copy of it tonight for members of council. Dan shared that Aldi was to be their first tenant, as is shown on the development plans. The plans also show designs for a restaurant parking on Main Street. Dan told me he had hopes of bringing up Panera to that location. Five other retail buildings were also planned stretching south from the Aldi building. When the Kmart property first went on the market in twenty-twenty, North Canton had only two years earlier adopted its Main Street Business District Plan, zoning plan. In twenty-twenty, city officials were contemplating yet another rewrite of the city's Main Street zoning code, later to be called, and I quote, zoning for North Canton's second century, close close. With North Canton's zoning seemingly changing often, developers Dan and Bill are approved to meet with city administrator Pat DiOrio regarding their plans for the former Kmart property should they consummate their purchase. According to Dan, he and Bill Lemon tapped with city administrator DiOrio, and were told by Mr. DiOrio that retail development would not be allowed under the assumed change zoning code. Taking Mr. DiOrio at his word, Dan and Bill immediately rescinded their offer to purchase the Kmart property and terminated their agreement with Aldi. I would like to make it clear that I am not speaking breaking of confidence. I spoke with Dan last Friday, and he has no problems with me speaking publicly about how North Canton city government wielded great power to ultimately secure ownership of the Kmart property. Weeks ago, I spoke directly with Bill Lemon, and he did not contradict the outcome of the meeting that Dan had described to me. I should add that North Canton's second century zoning passed in twenty-twenty-one ultimately did not exclude retail development, as city administrator DiOrio had stated in the February twenty-twenty meeting. Was this miscommunication or misrepresentation? North Canton city officials were able to discourage two regular developers from competing for the purchase of the Kmart property. The city ultimately paid three-point-four million taxpayer dollars for the property. The two hundred salary jobs promised by city officials have never materialized. Folks from city officials in an April fourteen twenty-twenty story by reporter Robert Plant offer further insight into the mindset of city officials at that time. Councilmember Vol stays in the story, and I quote, retail development would not help accomplish the goal of having one job for every one hundred feet of commercial and industrial building structure in the city, close close. City administrator DiOrio states, and I quote, the city is not interested in retail exposure. We're not pursuing this in order to facilitate retail. City officials are now asking this council and advocating zoning reservations that were just enacted less than a year ago. Is Meyer going to dictate the laws of North Canton? This is a zone change that is being made under duress. It is wrong to change the laws of North Canton to appease private interest. North Canton has discouraged gas stations on Main Street for decades for good reason. Maintain our pristine zone, zoning, and vote no on ordinance twenty-four twenty-two. I have the development plans, which are quite attractive, and it will cost the city nothing to have stepped aside and let Lemon and Dehoff make that purchase. And maybe you could spend the seven and a half million you spent on Soren Santa Cari.
Anyone else wishing to speak against the ordinance? Okay, this is the last opportunity to speak on either side. Same now, moving on, um, this will be appearing on the upcoming council agenda. Moving on to ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two. Ben, would you read the title for the record?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of North Canton to reclassify two thousand eight hundred and fifty parcels in the City of North Canton in accordance with the amendment procedure set forth in chapter eleven eighty-two of the Planning and Zoning Code, in order to add to the zoning classification thereof source water protection zoning overlay districts, in order to protect the drinking water resources of the City of North Canton, Ohio.
Okay, this is the source water protection zoning overlay, as Ben mentioned. Uh, at this time, is anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two?
Tucker Osborne, three oh seven Third Street. Tucker Osborne, 307 Third Avenue Streets, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I thought it would shock her why she'd come up here and say I am very much in support of this. So, it's something that should have been enacted years ago when we first created a swap committee. Uh, that was pushed and ushered through by former councilmember Kathy Baker. Council at that time let the appointments lapse for the members of that commission or committee were in the public, and it went out of existence. So, someone has finally picked up the ball. Shall I give the applause to Mayor Wilder, somebody, city administrator DiOrio, but I'm very much in support of him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against ordinance 31-2022? Okay, final opportunity to speak either way. Okay, this will also appear on the upcoming... Anything else? Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Totally.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Take a short break, and then we'll start the regular council. Okay, we're now all ordered, the city council meeting, Monday, May 23rd, 2022, the time is 7:03. Serve the opening prayer, Jim.
Let us pray. God peace, we invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have different opinions, give us spirit of unity. Help us to each listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote their own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. Amen.
Amen.
For the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its defense, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ben, would you pass on?
Member Orr?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Holt?
Here.
Member Stroh?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Wyre?
Here.
And member Lee?
Here.
Seven, President.
Okay, can I have a motion and second to approve minutes from April 25th, May 9th, as well as the 2022 financial report as presented?
And May 2nd.
We're going to amend May 2nd. That's what we're going to come back to that.
Revolt moves second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then David Matheny pointed out an error on the May 2nd agenda, or the May 2nd minutes. He could read into what it should say, John, where did you go?
So, in the minutes on page 25, line 8, Mr. Osborne was mentioned, it should be Mr. Orr looking at those comments. Just a minor change, the person who spoke.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve as amended the May 2nd minutes?
Revolt moves second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to Gerald to make a short comment.
As we move into recognition of visitors tonight, we'd like to divide the, that portion of our agenda into two segments. The first will be those individuals who are here tonight to speak about flooding that occurred recently. We'd like to set that group up first, and then second, we will go to all other items on the agenda or other items that individuals wishing to bring to council. It's really important tonight, in light of the unprecedented rainfall that we had, that we hear from the residents who are affected. The city's exploring assistance from Stark County and FEMA, but most importantly, we're collecting an inventory of residences that were impacted. You're not obligated to speak tonight, and if you're not comfortable doing so, there is a signing sheet at the table where you can place your name and address. What we intend to do with that is analyze the problems and create a map to help us identify our priorities. Prior to the rain event, the city had already bid out and expects to start a sewer project on 10th Street. We have, in the past, had serious water issues principally in the Zimmer ditch area. And the city has had great success in working with outside agencies to attempt to mitigate the effects of flooding in the Zimmer. To wit, there was a large multi-jurisdictional study that included parts of Summit County, Lake Township, Jackson Township. It included, in terms of action, the construction of some very large detention and retention basins outside the city. It included the demolition, the reconstruction of the bridge, the railroad bridge over Everhard Road to encourage water flow through Zimmer to the Minishun. And it also included the acquisition and demolition of homes along the Zimmer ditch. The past, I think, illustrates that the city is capable of executing large-scale, long-running projects. And I think I can speak for the rest of council tonight that it's our intent to listen very patiently, to get our arms around this, and begin working on it, on the problems. The inventory, your comments tonight, will help us identify projects that the city can address immediately, or problems the city can address immediately, and then help us tee up issues for more detailed analysis. Some of that, some of the remedies will require time, just as occurred on the Zimmer ditch. We miss if we promised instantaneous solution to these issues. What's critically important down the road is that we have as much possible information, we have a good study, because ultimately, some, but not all, remedies might require the approval of the county, the state, and the core of engineers. So, we will need, again, detailed information and contact information, et cetera, to help us move through that process. Mr. President?
Alright.
That's it?
Thank you, Gerald. Okay, at this time, we will begin the recognition of the public. Each individual will be granted five minutes to speak. The timing rules will be posted on the screen behind us. Would it's your turn to speak? Please come to the podium and begin by stating your name and your residential address. We're going to start with the flood. Anybody wishing to speak about the flood first? Any other issues will be after that.
Hello, my name is Barbara Brown, and I live at 426th Street Northwest, and I am here tonight with my husband Ted, who's a native of North Canton and a preference of Oklahoma High, and neighbors from Hillcrest Avenue Northwest and Sixth Street Northwest. We take great pride in our properties. We are here to seek the city council out of sheer frustration with the storm and sewer system in North Canton. Saturday evening, May 14th, we all suddenly had late front property. Have you ever looked out your front window and saw water almost up to your front door? The street flooded, water rushing between your house and your neighbor's driveways, covered with water flowing almost up to garages and into some of the garages, and the backyard is also flooded too. It's scary, and it happened to all of us. If water is surrounding your house, you know it must also be coming in through the drains. Home can be one foot to four feet or more of a mix of stormwater and sewer water flooding their basements. Estimated losses are in thousands of dollars. One resident lost two furnaces along with everything else in their basement. The force of the water also caused one of the walls to crack, and the wall was in danger of collapse. The company had to come in Thursday, Sunday morning to try to fortify the wall until it can be replaced. A conservative estimate to rebuild the wall is $25,000. The fire department was still pumping water out of that basin close to midnight, and we want to thank the fire department for their quick response. The cost of this flood to residents is great. Every household budget is stressed due to high inflation in energy and gasoline costs. Add to that natural gas and electricity costs rising this summer. Property taxes have also increased, and residents may have to borrow money to replace damaged property just at the time that interest rates are rising. We feel these are expenses that never should have happened. One neighbor became very ill with flu, like since the doctor's diagnosis was an encephalitis disorder due to bacteria in his basement water. He had been standing in this water for three hours while trying to remove as much water as possible. Another risk is the danger of black mold, which could cause future health issues. We can see with our eyes before this happened that many of the grates and drains along the streets were filled with leaves and grass. How often is the Fifth Street basin checked? The huge drain gauge is constantly flooded with leaves and trash. There is a smaller drain, maybe 12 inches in diameter, that doesn't seem large enough to handle all the water, and water seems to overflow into the street. This basin doesn't seem sufficient to handle the area. We are also here to seek your help with finding and fixing this problem, because this also happened in 2011, and we were told this is a once-in-a-hundred-year flood, and the city was not responsible. We've had numerous close calls over the past 11 years. It appears nothing was done to fix the problem, and the problem continues to be passed on to other administrations. We understand many of you were not in office the last time this occurred. We are asking that the present council does not follow precedent of the past councils and ignore our requests for help and decide to aid our neighborhood in taking care of the problem. The citizens of the city do not want to hear statements such as nothing can be done to solve the problem. Though it may be caused, and it may not be easy to do, there must be solutions that should be considered. Is there any possibility that the infrastructure build costing billions of dollars cash by Congress could be of any help to the city? Are there any state or federal grants for which the city could apply? Those not affected this time should be grateful. Those of us that were affected appreciate all the help that we received from our neighbors. We would also appreciate your help in the future as it pertains to getting these problems fixed. It has an effect on all of our property values. We are asking that you do something to help the citizens that have been greatly affected by this incident with some type of relief. We also ask that you bring in experts to help keep this from happening in the future. We are asking that you give some attention to this neighborhood problem. We know you can't stop the weather, but we don't like it being used as a reason not to face the problem. Would the neighbors please stand? City council members, if this had happened to your property, would you be as concerned as we are? You have heard our frustrations tonight, and we are asking that you address the need for better storm and sanitary sewers in North Canton. Thank you for your attention to our concerns.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Council. My name is Robert Vega.
I'm sorry, can you speak up in your last name?
Yes, my name is Robert Vega. I reside at 502 Fifth Street Northwest, Ward 1, on the corner of Willmann and Fifth Street Northwest. And this is the second impact that I've experienced with the flooding. You may hear how the peasant, peasant alluded to. And the mayor said we have to be patient. We need to be patient. Time is of the essence here, you know, we just have to hold on. I've been patient there for many, many years, Mayor. And I live next door to the basin at Fifth Street. I've seen a lot of flooding. The flood 11 years ago was not quite as high as this last flood. My neighbor's home was flooded. They live directly north of the basin. I live just west of it. It's my property. I have an easement for a storm sewer, a pipe that goes, I have an easement on the west side of the property that goes into the basin. That basin overflowed completely. It's totally inadequate. It was probably 12 foot above its capacity. It actually went into the driveway of my neighbor's home and into the lower area of their home. That water edged up into my front yard. Luckily, I'm on the south side of Fifth Street, unlike the residents on Hillcrest on the north and the folks on the north side of Fifth Street, who's experienced flooded backyards and basements. I was much more fortunate. But I want to allude to one thing. Over the last five or six years, I've approached the city to repair that pipe that goes alongside my home. There's a six-foot easement there, this storm sewer pipe. I've reported it for five, six years now. I've had sinkholes in my yard that I maintain. I maintain that west side of my property that the storm pipe goes through. I'm actually afraid to mow over it now, because I'm afraid I'm going to go down through the ground and end up five or six feet below me, because that pipe is about 10, 12 foot below the ground. There are two catch basins there on that west side. And again, I maintain that area. I've called whenever I experience sinkholes, and these holes are four, three, four foot wide, and they go down four or five foot deep. Of course, when I call, you're kind enough to come and put some gravel or some dirt in the sinkhole, which then, when it rains again, I got called again, and they come out and cordially put more dirt or gravel in that sinkhole. I have two of these sinkholes. And this has been going on, like I said, for about five years, six years. And I keep, I was told last year that we would replace that pipe. And then, so we couldn't get a pipe. COVID, we can't get the pipe, we're having problems getting the pipe. And I've been patient, Mayor. I've been patient five, six years now. But again, when it comes to the safety of my wife, others that may go across that property, I don't know if it's going to and I keep, I keep expressing that, but it's kind of landing on deaf ears, I guess. But that pipe is inadequate. I told, they went down to catch basin a couple of weeks back. They said the pipe is collapsing. The bottom of the pipe is rotted out, and it's actually folding on itself. So eventually, that pipe is going to close up. And it's not too far from the head wall. It goes into the Fifth Street catch basin. So I can only say that the people on the south side of Fifth Street, hang on, because the water's coming. Because it's the only place it can go. It's going to go west, and it's going to go southwest. And they were kayaking down Fifth Street in front of my home. So anyway, you know, I've sent photos, and like I say, when you come out, you put, you know, one, two-inch gravel in my sinkholes, put an orange cone on them, and that's been going on for years. So that pipe is totally inadequate, as is the majority of the system. So that's all I have to say. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Vega, what was your address again?
It's 502 Fifth Street Northwest. And it's on the corner of Willmann and Fifth Street. Okay, and that easement is just to the west of my, west side of my property. There's a six-foot easement that's on my, I keep for that storm, that sewer, or pipe going into that basin.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, first of all, I want to say the city of North Canton is really down the back of my home.
Oh, excuse me, I have an address for the right.
Oh, it's Judy Need at M H D E 125 Ninth Street Northwest, North Canton, 44720.
Thank you.
But I want to thank the mayor and everybody that worked on it. Martin, he's such a nice guy. You guys work, and you guys got me back in my home. And like I said, there was piles of, I had no money. I had no money at all. Me and my husband were retired. We had the house bought before, it was bought by his aunt. And we didn't know, we're, you know, we just wanted to buy a home for us. But this was written from my neighbor. This happened to him six years ago. And he had over four feet of water in his basement. It said, "Since 1971, two floods during the early 70s never did anything about it. Few floods since, but still after 2000, the drain over night has brought up to eight feet." I've seen, even my neighbor there, we see that manhole come up like this from the pressure. Thus recently, since they approved the street, there are drains, but they missed, but they're doing, from Woodrow. And I think the look into the reengineering, the basin flip, and the sewage keep separate from floodwater system is still a quing. The hydrostatic pressure in the west side of your house is from the drains from Woodrow family. And I wanted to say this has been going on since 1971. And Jim, my neighbor said, "You guys have to come out and fix it. You guys are going to come out and fix it. Guys, come out and fix it." And it's still, it's been six times since I lived in my house in eight years. I moved to North Canton because I love the city of North Canton. I'm from Akron, Kinnor area, if you guys know anything about that. I've been here for 30 years. And, you know, I still stay here in North Canton. You guys, like I said, you guys, you're here for so far. There's other things that needs to be done, and we'll work on that, like you said. But I want to express my opinion that he did help me a lot.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Teresa Mizner.
Say good.
Teresa Mizner.
Hey, Alex.
M I Z, N E R. I live at 604 Hillcrest Avenue Northwest. So when you talked about when your pipe breaks, where's it going to go? It's going to my house, in my spots. I was at the worst of North Canton in 2011. We had seven feet in our basement. I lost every single thing, material things, of course. But I'm talking about two heaters and furnaces. I've got furnaces and air conditioners, two sub hubs, which we have two to help us. Two hot water tanks, two freezers, not to mention all my Christmas things that I'm, that all three of my children made me. Everything gone, all my pictures, my crib, things like that from when I was around, all gone. We went from our curb to the stop sign twice with stuff. So, okay, major debt. We're still paying on that debt. We just got four and a half feet to get. Thank God, something is worse there. My son worked three 16-hour days at my house repairing our heating and air, because that's what he does. Thank God, he gives us a little bargain. But still, it's pretty pricey. We have one of our hot water tanks that do work, because we replaced it at the beginning of the year of the winter. Thank God, I was able to, both of my freezers this time. I cleaned them out good. They are functioning. So I do have some things that were lost since. I really do. But now I have an entire back of my house caved in wall. Thank God, it didn't fall that night, because that's my son's bedroom. That's our main living room. Luckily, the next day, when they put all these beams in, they said it was safe to come back in, but obviously, it needs some serious work to get truly safe. So once again, we're going to have to pay for all that. First book, now $28,900. That's not including everything that I just told you. You know what? I'm beyond upset. All the stuff on my curb, all the material things. I'm okay with that, for material things. But when I can't even live in my home safely and the act of God comes down and we can't control it, yes, you can't control it. You guys have to step up and do the streets right in that basin next to us? It's not correct. I didn't sit there stare out my front door in less than an hour. 2011, five and a half inches in one hour. This year, four and a half inches in one hour, and I literally sat there bawling my eyes out wide. It creeps, it creeps up to my side door and my back door. It's like you picked up my house and put it inside a lake. That's how bad it is. When I had to carry my dog on my shoulders because the water was touching my waistline to get to my neighbor to say, "Let us, hey, I've got a watch. Did you see at my house? It's just going to fall in?" We didn't know. We thought it was going to fall on us, right? It was really super scary. But there's no reason I have to constantly live my entire life in complete debt and never, ever get out of it, because our streets and that basin is not done correctly. We were told in 2011, this will never happen. Not in 100 years. Well, it's 11 years, people, and it happened to us again. It could happen next week. It could happen next month. I have no idea. But I do know one thing. We need help. My husband works for the police. I work for the schools. I mean, come on, people. We're supposed to be a community here. Let's start back to what I want, okay? Please?
Good evening. My name is Jacob Rector. I live at 112.
I'm sorry, sorry, say your name again.
Jacob Rector, R E C T O R. I live at 112 Woodrow Street Northwest. I'm new to the Canton area. I've been here about a year and a half. And our basic flood, just like everybody else's, our yard also floods, even with small rains. I'm not worried about myself and my family, because I'm young and a three-deal. But some of my neighbors and people around here, they're on vacation homes. They're going to lose everything. Their history. My history is just beginning. So let's take care of our senior citizens and people that we can. That's all I can say.
Good evening. My name is Jared Miller.
Your husband is?
Glenn Miller. I'm Jerry Miller. I live on Apple Grove Street Northwest, North Canton. And Mr. McLeister was kind enough to come over to our house and look at all the mess we had. The storm drain on democracy, we were told by a couple neighbors there, had possibly some concrete placed, some roadwork, and a lot of debris in it, and it shot up, and the water came down through there, encircled the one guy's home. He, as of Monday, was up to $75,000 in repairs. Had to move out of his home because they shut off the gas and the water. And I talked to him, and he said he had to get a lien for that $75,000, and his amount is probably going to go up. We're probably close to $10,000 to $15,000. And the water also went over our driveway into an apartment building, whom Mr. Attorney Ronald Stark is here, that he owns, that he's had renovation, the trucks over there, restoration trucks for, ever since Sunday. They're still there. And I still see them taking stuff out. And I want to play you a video that you can hear. We had our shed and two other sheds float. I watched them down into our front yard. Our front yard is like the length of a football field. And I want you to listen to this video. This is the water coming beside our house. Mr. McLeister saw this. Waited to shut up. That's, it sounded like Niagara Falls. I lived at this home 25 years, never had any water. Because our insurance said, because we don't have flood insurance, we have no creeks. We did Saturday. I mean, this was unbelievable. And our sheds, our shed floated, and Mr. McLeister saw these, two other sheds clear out to the street. And then the water crossed our driveway, went over this poor man's apartment building that is just absolutely unbelievable, the damage, I'm sure. So help us help.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
I'll take it.
Back to our speaker system, because of our live stream.
My name is Ron Starkey, S T A R K E Y. I live at 454 West Willamette Drive, Coventry Township, Ohio 44319. I'm the owner of 10th Saturday Liberty Lane Way located in North Canton, Ohio. Liberty Lane Apartments. It's a 12-unit building. And as Mrs. Miller was kind enough to disindicate, we're neighbors at that property. And Saturday night, with the video she showed, unfortunately, I had four lower-level apartment units completely engulfed in water. When I arrived, 30 minutes later, they were at least three inches deep, all of them. Three young individuals and a secret citizen and the other. All of them lost everything they had. I've had to evacuate them out of the building. I've got a restoration crew there, just crying in excess of $25,000 at this point. I probably have another $50,000 of damage. I realized the city will be undertaking things. I was good enough, because I know Mr. Graham from a previous life, to talk to him Saturday night about the situation. And I've already consulted with my own professional engineer to see what I can do in the meantime, because I know the argument works, and I know it will be slow. But one thing that concerns me is I, this building flooded out less than a year ago, before I bought it from the previous owner. And there had urgent steps by the previous owner to fortify this building because of the city's inadequate sewer system. So that gives me concern, because I can't keep your building and things every 10 months and make that profitable go for me. But more importantly, for the young people that were in that building, unfortunately, three of whom did not have any type of insurance to cover any of their losses, I feel for them. And I know the city has, or is in the process of enacting legislation to protect tenants. I think you need to remember tonight, you've heard from homeowners and property owners, but there are, there are a lot of tenants who probably suffer far worse because economically, they can't afford it, and I think you need to take that into consideration as well. And I think you need to take that into consideration as well. Thank you.
My name is Bart Scholar. I live at one one five Ninth Street Northeast. I'm the homeowner at Aerotech Abbey and across from Donato's. So I'm right by the main intersection. I'm kind of represented in Ninth Street because a lot of them could not come in. I think nine homes were affected. Most of it was raw sewage coming back and up into a drain. On a positive note, Mr. Fan from, when he was alive, from Aerotech fought like crazy because we had flooding. I, I've lived there forty-three years. So we've had flooding over the years and he fought like crazy because his basement would get three feet of water all the time, Aerotech Abbey, and just crap and everything floating around. So we fought in two thousand and five, we were thrilled. The city came in, I was looking at pictures today. Done up everything, put new sewer lines. We thought, wow, this is it. At the time, they were concerned because I didn't know any differently. But they said that they thought our lines were big enough. When they got to Main Street, they fed into smaller lines. So I don't know if that's the case, but since then, we were fine for a while. We, we did much better. We lost up the first time, but this time we said we watered up the basement, not stumps, did everything right. We are not by a creek, we are not by a river. We're not in a flood area. So we thought we were pretty safe. The road was all done, other than maybe get large pipe going into small pipe concern. Um, this time, it, the last, in two thousand and eleven, we had sweeping done at Aerotech Abbey. And they've had five or six times since where they get a couple of feet of water in their basement. They're lower than me, they're right next door. Um, this Saturday, I've never seen the water higher on Ninth Street. It went all the way up to, if you're aware of the area, all the way up to Aerotech Abbey's building and all the way up to Donato's parking lot. I faced Donato's parking lot and Aerotech is on the side. There were cars that were stuck in the water. They came up almost like five sidewalks towards my house, not really towards the street. That is the deepest, so we thought, oh no, we better check the basement. We checked the basement, there was nothing. We thought, oh wow, you know, this is gonna be okay. It was there and then took a couple hours, but all the water went down. And we thought, wow, you know, the sewers are working, everything is great. We checked the basement, everything was perfect. Neighbor called me and said, uh-oh, I'm getting a little bit of water. I said, don't worry, we have a wetback, we'll be over in a minute. All of a sudden, my husband straightens up and says, we're getting water. It started coming nonstop, two hours, out of the shower drain, pure raw sewage. So here we thought, like I said, the street, the water went down, it was dry. So it handled what looked as the water, but then all of a sudden, for two straight hours, I even called the police department to say, are they gonna, does this stop at any time? I've never had it come, two solid hours, because we were locked and watching the clock. The only thing that saved us, we only had about ten inches of raw sewage. But raw sewage is raw sewage, let me tell you. So I feel blessed compared to all the people here that lost everything in their basement. But we thought the problem was fixed because the city did come out and dig up the street. We could have put a power gun or how deep they went. You know, so we thought it was fixed. Um, we were fortunate, within an hour after it stopped, we had a water sewage company, I mean, water cleanup company come out and they were ready to suck it up, sanitize, steam it, dry everything, dehumidifier. So we were one of the lucky ones. Some people on the street waited two days to have people come and do that. So we felt so blessed and so much better off than the rest of them. But again, we thought our street was fine. Um, we, the claim was a ten thousand dollar claim. It was covered, we were fortunate. But they considered ten thousand dollar damage, but we had to do the drywall, the bathroom, the vanity. Um, so nine homes were affected on Ninth Street. A concern I have is the water sewer drains. I, you know, I cleaned it for my house today, I cut the grass, I cleaned in front. And just because there was so much gravel and mulch and everything was going down the street, half my mulch went down Ninth Street. And I was able to clean in front of mine, so I went down to Aerotech and the sewer drains are clogged, I couldn't even move this up, it sludged. And I didn't understand why, after that storm, the sewer drains weren't cleaned and at least someone didn't make sure from the city. You couldn't get, you couldn't even shovel to get that up. You know, I was trying to move it with what I had. So the one right by Aerotech was really clogged. They had a foot of water over Aerotech again. A concern I have, and this is, on Ninth Street, we love the playground. We think that playground in North Canton is the best thing that ever happened. I'm a special ed retired teacher in North Canton, I love it. But they filled in a lot of dirt in that low area at the end of Ninth Street. Then they went to Orchard and built a parking lot, and they do have a water, but it was coming around that corner like a river coming down Ninth Street. So I don't know if something else needs to be looked at on that. Like I said, we really feel blessed, we love the playground, we were glad the city was done one time. I have pictures to share with our councilmen, but I've never seen it like that in forty-three years. And we thought we did everything right, we're not by a river, sewer, you know, a flood area. So, or one of the basins, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. I am Brianna Holloway. I live at two eleven Woodrow Street Northwest. We have lived here three years and we have three young kids, six-year-old, four-year-old, eighteen-month-old. Uh, when we bought the property three years ago, we, I, I'm a graduate of Hoover, by the way, too. But when we bought the property three years ago, we were never told about any flooding at that property. Uh, the day we closed on the house, we went over and our backyard was flooded. Um, so we had no idea about it. We decided to look into adding a drain. So we paid five thousand dollars to add drains to our backyard that sucked into the city, city drains. Um, that didn't help when we had the flooding. Um, our backyard was filled, our, someone sent me a video, one of our neighbors, we were actually out at dinner, and one of our neighbors sent me a video of our playhouse floating in the middle of Woodrow. Our trash cans were like four houses down. Um, there's two cash basins, there's one in front of our house and one in front of the neighbors across the street. My husband oftentimes has to go out there whenever it rains to clear it because things just get stuck in front of it. Um, our basement was completely ruined with raw sewage. Um, so we had luckily, a restoration company came Saturday night and was able to start work because, again, three young kids, it smelled really gross. Um, we had two dogs in the basement at the time, too, so obviously we had to clean them up. Um, it was, it was just really hard to deal with. Um, still is, our basement's still not, it's empty. Um, everything's out of there, but we filled a twenty-yard dumpster with everything from our basement. Um, so I was told, I've looked into alleviating this problem in the future, and they say like a backflow preventer or something, but that cost sixty thousand dollars. So who's gonna pay for that? We can't afford to pay for that, we have to follow the other commitments. So we're just asking that someone fix the sewage, like the plumbing problem because the sewers and sanitation are together, they should be separated. And then this would help feed, alleviate things in the future. Thank you.
Hi, Miss Annie Jeffries. I actually live on the other side over on Woodside, nine oh four Woodside Avenue, on the corner of Summit and Woodside. My family and I moved here two years ago because we wanted to give our children a better option for schooling. Our three children currently go to St. Paul's and they will be attending Hoover when it comes time for preschool. Our issues started a year ago. This is the second time our house has flooded in ten months. Last time it flooded, our whole basement was destroyed. And we were only living in this house not, maybe nine months. We do not have flood insurance. I didn't think we'd need flood insurance because we don't live around water, we don't live, I just would never imagine I'd need flood insurance. We have ten thousand dollars of damage washed away. We had to replace our floors. And my father-in-law passed away a week before this happened. My husband has lost him entirely permanently. And when my father-in-law passed away, everyone, every half of their members was sitting in a garage. We lost everything. My, my sister lost everything, she lost everything of hers. We lost everything of my father-in-law's and everything of my mother-in-law's. All three of our guests, and we have nothing left from them because it was destroyed. We called the city and they basically told us, you guys have a private drain, it's your problem. They came out and they said, it's your problem. That's what I was told. So we have a private drain in our driveway. It was repaired and we made a bigger pipe so that if it happened again, we wouldn't have the issues. Well, the problem is not us, it's the sewers. They overflow and the sewage comes up our laundry room, it comes up our shower drains, and it comes up our drains. My husband is a local K nine officer. We have our K nine dog in the basement and that dog would have drowned from it. We had so much water in our basement. And this has happened two times in ten months. This time, we've had to have dumpsters, this is the second dumpster I've had since living here. Everything in my basement is trashed. Water heater, we didn't have hot water for five days. Our washing machine, my work computer, and eight hundred dollar lawnmower, um, our leaf blower, four hundred dollar leaf blower, everything. Our shed in our backyard, it flooded so much, everything else in that cluster story as well. So I'm buying all this new stuff out of my own savings because I don't have insurance. And I just, I just can't believe, like, I just can't believe this is where we're at. I've lived here for two years, it was our dream to live in the city, and now we're gonna feel like we're living in a nightmare. And it shouldn't be on us. And I, I don't know what you guys can do to fix this, but I'm ready to move out of North Canton because of this. But the people that told us did not tell us that this house floods two to three times a year. So I don't wanna be the person that puts it on someone else. So I feel stuck because I'm not the type of person that's gonna let someone move into a house that floods two times a year. This is ridiculous. Like, I can't even feel safe in my home. And we're going out of town next week. I'm afraid to leave. I'm afraid when I come home to water in my garage, in my sunroom, in my basement, like everywhere. I'm afraid to leave. Why aren't they asking my neighbors to watch my house every week? What kind of living situations are we in? How can we live like this in the city with the taxes we pay? It's ridiculous. And I wanna know, like, did any of your houses flood? I really would like to know that. Did anyone on this, did anyone flood?
Not this time, but I had flooding in two thousand and eleven, twelve.
So what are you gonna do to help the citizens of North Canton? I would love to hear some options that may occur in the coming weeks. Do you have a question?
This isn't a question and answer session, sorry. It's, we'll evaluate and stipulate, but-
When will we get answers?
Wait, guys.
We're here to listen and to evaluate tonight.
Okay, what was your question?
When will we get answers? Thanks. You guys all, wait.
The answer to your questions, I indicated at, by opening remarks. We're gonna identify properties impacted. A, B is, we're gonna look at, the General Department will look at immediate, short-term remedies. For bigger issues, we're likely going to have a professional done hyalogen study. We have to determine where the problem is, what the appropriate remedy is.
Well, I'm noticing, I'm the only, I'm the only person here from Woodside.
Just, just, one, one, one second. You're in Woodside Southeast area.
Yes, I'm on the corner of Woodside and Eastside.
No, right where you are.
Yeah, it's health, it's pure health. Two years.
Just by way of background, back in the late eighties, the entire storm drainage system, and I believe the sanitaries were redone at that time because there was, there was an issue, which, like you described. My recollection may be imperfect, but I know the city has taken one bite at that problem. Again, we're gonna need some professional help to determine the way forward. That project also had some professional design and analysis. We're gonna have to have it again.
Yeah, and I'm honestly shocked I'm the only person from Woodside here. And I'd like to show you a picture of what my backyard looked like that night. My husband's piece of wood was this close to being ruined. And he had to pull it up on a hill just so it wouldn't be driven.
I know.
That is not normal. That's the backdrop. It is devastating. We know how long it's been five days, the washing machines, I have to go to work and get all new computers. This is not the way we settled it.
Do you think you'd get flooded with these many complaints?
Anyone else wanting to talk before?
Chuck Osborn, three oh seven Figueroa Street, South Facebook, North LA. I can certainly repeat the same situation that the gentleman who had a storm line collapse in his yard. Several years ago, I had a neighbor down on Fairview, probably not far from where the previous lady was speaking. Uh, he also has a storm line that runs between two homes. The storm line, I think it's about a thirty-six inch storm line. It's about six feet from the foundation of his house. It broke open and it repeatedly created sinkholes, but the last time, he fell into it and safety forces had to come and extract him. The storm line helps the water flow from the Hoover property, which, when they wanted to expand the Hoover parking lot, I brought in an engineer and told him about all those stormwater issues in that area. They still couldn't handle it, they had to expand that parking lot by a third, which will never be deep anyway. Uh, so anyway, this gentleman had to be extracted, Max Angelo. I must be two thousand years old, because every time this happened, I hear the reply, it's a five-hundred-year storm.
Yes.
I've seen that in others. Uh, up on Ninth Street, Dick Fan of the Hobby Shop. About twelve, fifteen years ago, I was walking around in his basement with waiters on it. Sewerage floating about two feet tall. They did do some improvements down there, but obviously I guess it wasn't enough. Uh, there's another couple on Ninth Street on the west side. They put in one of these very expensive backflow preventers. It's vacuum operated, there's a big manhole cover in the basement. And an alarm comes on when it actuates, and a big inner tube inflates to stop the backflow. In my twenty-some-odd years of being pretty active in this city, you've got stormwater problems and sewage problems throughout the city. They're either undersized, leftover from years ago. And there's no political will to get out there and make sure citizens are safe. My last year on council in two thousand and three, they didn't hesitate to outspend four point two million for Aerotech Golf Course. And it has continued to cost the city millions of dollars since then. Uh, a few years later, they pulled a million and a half dollars out there and started handing out to businesses. Store of liquor over to the Hoover District. They give them cranes that they paid four hundred and forty thousand dollars for. And recently, we've seen seven and a half million dollars gone after speculating in the real estate market. These kind of monies should have been gone in to improving our infrastructure. And it's this way throughout the city. I, I am not aware we have a combined storm and sewer. They're each independently defective, ineffective. So, stick to the basics. Do what you need to do, do. Our, our livelihoods and our home life and our happiness depends on it. Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to speak about the flood tonight?
Are you open to jamming in yet, or are you still on?
We're, we're taking the flood first, so we're taking the flood first.
Okay, that's fine.
And then anyone, if anyone's done with the flood, we'll, we'll move on. I want to give everybody the opportunity to, to share with us. So we'll now open it to all other. Yeah, you know what, honestly, that's, yeah, that's a good idea. Let's take a short recess. If, if people want to leave after speaking about the flood, they don't have to stay the rest of the day. Larry will be the first one back out. You'll be the first one back out.
I mean, I've been trying to figure out.
Listen, listen.
I didn't get a chance to talk to her. I know my other neighbor's street labor is top two.
We're, we're the first house in the neighborhood.
We didn't get, we're on the other side.
Yeah, you're on the other side.
Yeah.
We have a dumpster.
Yeah.
We did, because it's a trash pit.
Yeah.
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 I'm so sorry.
It's Christian.
Yeah, that's my daughter.
I talked to her years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
I met Carolyn. She helped me watch my truck.
Oh, yeah.
She made me set my truck.
It's not on me, it's not.
They tore down her old Appleberry.
Yeah.
I said, I wonder if you moved, so that's where you moved.
Yeah. Well, she's been, she has two kids. One is twenty-three, going to school, out late.
She can come over and, she went on a trip with me with the, with the trip.
I'll have to tell Carolyn.
Tell Carolyn this guy, just say the name.
Yeah, but, uh, the surveying that's for all these ones along the block. She's got one more representant, Johnny, who, that she got another one on the block. And she does good, um...
I thought about that when they tore that house down.
Yeah, we were all, yeah.
But I'm sorry, you got to go.
We didn't have that much.
We didn't have that much.
Oh, my God.
We had the big restaurant.
I just, yeah.
Oh, my God. Yeah, we feel blessed to, yeah. But you know when Rossy was a store, she started...
Yeah, like all my Christmas stuff, I had to be...
Then Meyer Pier was closed, and you know, my children were...
Okay.
Continue where we left off. Larry, if you'd like to start, or speak something.
Larry Trigg, 1127 East Maple, North Canton. Uh, the twenty-twenty-two North Canton government body now in existence for six months is pretty much gone as I expected. Senior members of our city government getting their younger members, who in my opinion are not filling the bill as elected government personnel. As I observe, they are more interested in photo ops or just following the lead role of senior council member or city administration. I have made it a point to talk to each of them since the election. One conversation stands out when one person suggested to me that the new Meyer store will attract three thou- three thousand cars daily. Apparently, it makes no difference to this individual that these three thousand cars and its occupants will cause the demise of local and small businesses in North Canton. Now, on the other hand, we are seeing the performance of councilpersons Detheny and Orr as being very good. We are seeing activity emergency emerging from these two individuals as unseen in a long time at council meetings. Mr. Diorio, I applaud you for stating that the fate of the proposed rental registration rests slowly on your shoulders. However, I applaud a little louder for Councilman Methino, Metheny and Orr who intelligently questioned the proposed ordinance and have the conviction to bold note. Something rarely seen in recent council meetings. Tonight, you have your final vote on the proposed rental registration ordinance. Again, Mr. Diorio, I appreciate your stand, but as we heard last week from Mr. Tedrick, blighted property does not exist only with rental property. For several years, I have asked the city for, for a city income tax break for property, for property owners to enhance the looks of their property. With a freshly painted house, new siding, new roof, et cetera. Always get a favorable comment, but nothing done. So I don't agree everything has been done to move forward with ordinance forty, forty-three, twenty-twenty-two, as I believe my suggestions could be incorporated as a tool to further promote, promote safety, welfare and concern for the North Canton residents. Roughly three or four years ago, Mr. Diorio and councilperson revoked in separate meetings, accompanied me to look at the deterioration of street gutters in Ward's War Two. It was readily agreed that they were in bad shape, but again, nothing was done. Things off, only got worse and are still getting worse from the looks of the gutters on East Maple in front of my residence at eleven-two-seven East Maple. Isn't it about time for city government personnel to begin to look around, listen to its citizens and work for the good of North Canton? Forget photo ops, forget taking city personnel from their daily duties to a grade school. This is why the departments have open houses yearly. Forget about a visit to Walsh College. Nice, but just another photo op. Please, no more meeting of government personnel, four council members and four from administration in meeting at Daymark to play around construction equipment and discuss the demise of local and small businesses. By the way, I believe this meeting clearly violates the state of Ohio sunshine laws. Lastly, how does one even attempt to address the mayor's comments to the repository as he commented on our recent brainstorm and sewer and drainage problems? And I hope, and I think, people have to be cognizant as to where they buy and where they live. Thank you.
Dominic Quante, 965 Fair Oaks Avenue, Southwest. The reason why I'm here today is as a former council member for seven and a half years. If anybody remembers me, and of course, Cynthia or Christina, when you were at the promo, remember all the promos we did? And the reason why is because I always felt that the constituency never really felt connected to the administration and the council. We're doing so, if you're thinking back to the time I was in, we didn't have a Facebook page, we didn't have a good newsletter, we had to enhance the sound system. So I was really instrumental in pushing that because that was one of my pet peeves, if anybody remembers. And so communication is the key. And so as a real estate agent for thirty-five years, lived in the city for nearly thirty years, had a rental in the city for twenty-eight years, and being on council, and of course, I would talk to each and every one of you, because this is the last chance you guys have to give it, put it on the shelf, delay it. Let's not do the rental registration for the simple fact that communication is key, right? Because the communication is, in nineteen seventy-eight, when I was in high school, a late bloomer, of course, right? They had this legislation that says if you own a rental in North Canton, you should be able to register or at least let the people know with the financial department, who those people are, so we know who lives in the city, make sure they're paying their fair dues, right? And plus, we get a little more of an understanding of what properties we actually own and who lives there. And when people change over, you're supposed to know about that. Now, being on council for seven and a half years, never heard of that. Being a landlord who uses it as a small business, which is not a hit, rich, quick scheme by many of these things you've heard, it's kind of like a four-one-ten thirty years. So it's nothing very fancy. But the point is, is that we don't have a rental problem here, we have a communication problem. So the point what I'm suggesting, guys, this is for all the people that are for it. This is your night to show me you guys are listening, man. Like, we got other fish to fry. And if you remember, I was on streets and alleys as well, so this topic that came up tonight, zimmer ditch was my headache that I had. And some of you that have been around know that. And that's a sidebar, but the point is today is we have the website, we got the technology. Why don't we just say, did you know if you own rental real estate in North Canton, there's an ordinance that's been around since nineteen seventy-eight? And what we need is compliance because there's some people that aren't registering and paying their fair share, whatever you want to say. And just, let's do it, let's communicate it to the people. And then let's gather some of the top agents that are in town, that work in the North Canton area and surrounding areas, and let them know this is the rule. And if we can't get compliance, then we're gonna have to install rental registration. Like, what is wrong with communicating? Now, I'm very dialed in, you guys know that, right? Like, I do the videos, I do the promotion, I'm a big promoter of the downtown North Canton business development, because we only have six miles to create a footprint, to generate revenue, to take the pressure off the backs of the citizens. So my suggestion is, is put it on the shelf, let's use our social media, let's use our things to get the word out, let them know what the rules are. I didn't even know about it until I heard Daryl talk about it two weeks ago, talking about this thing like I was in high school, man. So anyhow, I think that's one of the main things. Now, let's backtrack a little bit on the flood, since I did talk about it, but I wanted to touch on that. So we have over three thousand drain grates, and the engineer remembers me very well, because we had all these drain grates where all the leaves are collecting right now. I mean, since I was so used to streets and alleys, I always would drive around, take pictures, send them to council members, to administration, I was a big fan in their side. And then I would root out to Rob, Rob, is this true? Just thumbs up, it's true, isn't it? So we replaced over three hundred of those three thousand twenty-eight hundred under my watch, because they replace them as the salt deteriorates the bricks and they drop down, and it's a hazard. So they would put these cement casts in, which have small holes, so as they fill up with water... Now, think about it, you know, while the sewer's backing up in eleven, they took those grates, and we're trying to fix the infrastructure, so that's a big thing to do. The drain grates, if they're clogged up, the water's gonna flow down the water on top of the road where those manholes are, and they're gonna go down into sewer holes and overwhelm the sewer. So the drain grates always have to be clean, and you want to do that prior to the rainy season. So, I mean, John Moore, I've heard stuff a hundred times, John, and you've been sharing the work. But in closing, please stand with shelf this baby until you guys do a little better job communicating. You know that's my pet peeve. That's the one reason why I ran for office, is because I wanted to do something about building communication through constituency and city government. Thank you. Good evening. Chris Thomas, twenty-three and one, McNaughton Street, Northwest.
I'm sorry, say your name, Chris Thomas.
Twenty-three and one, not in North Canton anymore, formerly was, formerly was in council. I'm here at Pat and my employer, Windstream Communications. And Windstream, if you're not familiar, is a broadband and telephone company based throughout pockets of Ohio, Lorraine County, Jop, and most further north than us. And we are looking to build a fiber-to-home network throughout much of Stark County, including virtually all of North Canton. So I gave my cards here at the break. We're not, we're doing this on, you know, we're not asking for contribution for the project. I want you to have my contact information, I've been in contact with the city engineers, so I know what the permitting requirements and right of way and all of those things, so I think we're okay there. Timeframe, within probably twelve months, we would like to have the first customers hooked up. The sooner we get the process rolling, you know, the sooner this area will be, and this is where I live, so I'm hoping that Stark County gets ahead of the list of what corporate builds. As I said, it should be the vast majority of North Canton. There might be pockets where because of costs of construction or going underground or what have you, that is not done. I know the city probably still may have rescue plan funds, if that's something that you'd want to partner with for to defray some of those construction costs, that's a conversation we can have down the road. Our plans aren't on our end, so we haven't gotten an engineer, and it probably won't be for several weeks, even months. So I'm just seeing it up, not asking anything, just letting them know that might be a possibility. Once construction starts, I'll let you know, you know, the engineer's office will of course know, but you'll have my contact information now, if you're checking. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Dave Shaw, good night.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Emily Levitt Iero. I live at seven one four.
Emily, do you want to say your last name again?
Sure. It's Levitt hyphen I E R O. You're welcome. I live at seven one four Woodrow. I'm currently on the Board of Directors for the Stark Trouble Association of Realtors. I am the manager and a twenty-year Realtor in Stark County, living in North Canton. I do own properties in North Canton. Today, I speak as an interested party to ordinance number forty-three dash two zero two-two. As we all know, the ordinance establishing chapter seven oh three, registration of rental units and inspection of residential rentals within the city of North Canton. I believe in a housing market that consists of safe, diverse, and affordable homes, I understand the city's need to inspect exterior properties of the properties. This does assist in the overall health of our housing stock and marketability of the area. I do not support interior inspections. I do believe this does go against private property rights, and it's not something that's required of other property owners within our city. I feel we should focus on better enforcement of existing property maintenance, building, and nuisance codes. I appreciate your role, and I thank you for your willingness to serve and the commitment you have to North Canton. Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to speak today? Moving on to the business. I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance forty-three dash twenty-two.
So move to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion care, Ben?
An ordinance establishing chapter seven oh three, registration of rental units of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, and thereby requiring registration and inspection of rental units located within the city of North Canton, Ohio.
At this time, I don't have anything to add, but I would ask Mr. Rohr, Mr. Metheny, if they have any comments at this time?
Yes, I still oppose. I guess there was supposed to be some amendments that I did later.
Yes, after.
We took, you know, we took and listened to some of the public speaks, we've heard some people tonight. I'm totally against this, the way it's worded. I think we can work on it. I would like to make a motion table this, so we can review what was said tonight, because some things were said, you know, in previous council meetings, and we will be updating those. But for the third reading, I would like to make a motion table this for two to four weeks. And really, you know, we had the rules out there, they weren't obeyed for forty-four years, and I just think we need to really wrap ourselves around this a little bit tighter with the verbiage and stuff. So I'd like to make a motion that we table this for two to four weeks.
Before we go into the second motion.
There's a motion. Let's get through the motion first, and then we'll go on.
Do you have questions?
Now, before you... And once there's a motion being proposed, we're gonna vote on the motion, and then we'll come back to it if we can.
So, under bar's rules, we'd need to, if there's a second, then there would be debate on that motion.
So the debate first after the second.
Yeah.
Then I will second that motion to suspend ordinance forty-three, I'm sorry, forty-three dash twenty-two.
Did you...
Well, we have discussion before the vote.
For the third.
For that motion to... So under bar's rules, your general rotation is motion, discussion, vote.
It's a discussion.
On that motion specifically.
Would you like to?
So, along those lines of suspending the vote until the next council meeting, as the city parties mention. But one of the items that is somewhat concerning is we are now, tonight, having our third reading and final vote on this ordinance. Yet there were changes that took place within the last week, and I think it's only fair that all of those changes be reviewed, that the public has an opportunity to see what those changes are. The fact that they are legal changes, and Mr. Goyer was involved in this. There were comments made that this legislation was a product of technical and legal review in previous meetings. Yet we're here in the last hour making some legal changes. So with that being part of the discussion, I think that we postpone this for two weeks, it gives us an opportunity to digest this additional information and make a proper decision.
Can I make a comment based on the legal changes to the draft that Councilman Metheny is addressing? This was based on a discussion of a case that was brought up at one of the last public speaks. The case was called Baker versus City of Portsmouth. And that case was reviewed prior to drafting the ordinance that was originally placed in front of you. The ordinance that was originally placed in front of you addressed the concerns from Baker v. Portsmouth and would follow the holding in Baker v. Portsmouth. However, after discussing it with a few members of council, with Mr. DiOrio reviewing the language, we revised the language to make the intent clearer. It does not change the vast majority of the content of the ordinance, but it clears up the issue that was addressed in Baker. So with that said, the underlying information related to the ordinance and the mechanisms by which everything is enforced stayed identical. It was just basically, in reviewing Baker again, the discussion was made to make certain aspects, two very specific provisions, clearer, and that's what was addressed.
Those specific instances has to do with the right to enter somebody's property? Are we borderline touching upon tort amendment here?
We are not, that's what the Baker case addressed. The Baker case addressed that a, an ordinance that permitted a warrant, I mean, make sure I parse my language correctly here. An ordinance that permitted a warrantless search of a property and made it a criminal penalty if that property owner refused that search was unconstitutional. That is not what our original ordinance said. Our original ordinance said that if you refused the search, you were still granted a license to operate, you were just granted the lowest level license that we had. So it did not require that you comply or else. But in reviewing the ordinance, we thought that it could be made clearer that we were in fact in compliance with the Baker decision, and that's what we did. We revised the language to deal with that. But to address your concern, as far as whether there's a fourth amendment concern with the ordinance as written, the answer to that question would be no, there is not.
You said that you had met with, of course, during the amendment, you met with members of council, or yes, members of council?
Yeah, one member of council specifically, in addition to Patrick DiOrio, was primarily my issue, and I met with Ben Young as well.
And you met with members of council?
I did a member of council, and that was council member Vol. And that was a very brief discussion. It was tangential to the conversation that I was having with Ben and with Mr. DiOrio.
You don't think it would have been better for the city if you talked to the people who were closing?
Ultimately, the question that was brought to me was a legal question, and I am the legal counsel for the city. And so at that point, I did not feel the need to bring it to your attention simply because it had to do with the legality of the ordinance and not the substance of the ordinance. Yes, sir?
So I guess just before this revolts speaks, I would like to reiterate the fact that we're still making changes to this legislation. And I've asked from the beginning that we make sure that we do the best job possible on going down with half of rental registration. And that cause for inspection would have to be a very important factor, and then anything without cause was where my concern lies. So given that, I still stand behind the fact that maybe we should postpone this vote for a couple of weeks, so that we can give the rest of our questions answered, given that these changes were made sort of two days ago. Is it cool?
Can I ask a question?
May.
Where, do you feel like there are still issues, maybe to her, from the public or concerns, that you still feel like we're navigating through?
I do not.
Emily, I'm sorry, I said that you feel that there are concerns or issues that we're still navigating through.
I do not, I believe that the concerns that were brought up tonight were very similar to the concerns that we discussed in previous meetings, and would not go towards the meaning to revise the ordinance per se, it just goes to the underlying effect of the ordinance, which we've discussed at my stage.
So, Mr. Rupert, excuse me. So along those lines, when it comes to the penalty phase for infractions that are not updated, in that timeframe, that hundred dollars per day charge, if we issue a license to somebody that has two infractions that last for three years, at what point do the hundred dollars per infraction kick in per day, and at what point is it non-existent? And I don't understand that part of the legislation, because it stakes a hundred dollars per day for infraction.
Yes, I don't understand you second half of your question, if you please clarify that, as far as what point it becomes non-existent.
So if you get a license for registration that lasts three years before your next inspection, are you paying a hundred dollars per day for the two that were never officially wiped off the slate as it being corrected?
If you fail to remedy it, then you would be subject to the fine per day of one hundred dollars, which is similar to a lot of our other ordinancees as far as if there's a violation of various items. We have the ability to... We have the ability to assess a one hundred dollar per day, um, fine as far as the infraction is concerned. That does not necessarily mean that you would have to issue that. You could continue to work with the landlord. But ultimately, um, until you remedy whatever the infraction is, those would continue to accrue, yes.
But if you are working on it, you're working with us and you're not going to have a penalty at that point.
Correct.
Maybe you're working on it.
Yes, if you're working on it and have come to the city and basically talked about a solution
Yeah.
um, and are working towards it, then that would not kick in. Basically, until you fail to remedy it and fail to work with the city to, um, remediate the issue.
Many concerns on my part.
So Dave, when you say many, many concerns, what else are you thinking of?
So within this legislation, I brought the fact that we're only going after the small businesses, the individual homes because of capacity of manpower to handle this. And I go back to the original point, there should be registration for all. We shouldn't parse out registration based on the size of the remittances. Now inspections that can't take place, you can initiate inspections by cause. You can initiate all of the inspections based on ordinance in chapter seventeen that already state what the exterior of homes and buildings needs to be to generate a cause for an internal inspection. I think it should also include when there's a change of person within that rental unit, that there's an inspection done. I think if there's a change in ownership, our, one of our largest, if not the largest rental complexes changing ownership very soon to a company out of Cleveland. And at that point, there should be inspection of all open units ready to be rented. Those are some of my concerns.
I would really add that I think we heard tonight, um, from the public, what was the real purpose of last Monday night's position from the Realtors? And that is no interior inspections. That's the purpose. Delay paralyzed by analysis, nothing happens. I would encourage us to adopt this tonight. It is the, as this begins to unfold, I think we have in our capacity to revisit this issue to make further legislative changes. And we will look forward to working with the Realtors at that time. We should note for the record that the Realtors met with Mr. Diorio and there was no substantive agreement as a result of that conversation. So.
We have a motion. Any else, anyone else want to discuss before we go on?
I think for me, sorry. For me personally, I'm preparing to be on a medical leave. I would like the opportunity to vote on this legislation that I've done quite a bit of researching and spoken with a number of people on as well and some delay. Well, there's the opportunity. I would just.
I encourage the council that if you have any doubt, we're only postponing it for, let's say, two weeks. You know, I know you might be on a medical leave and that, is there a possibility of zooming in?
Not in two weeks, no.
Okay. But if there's any doubt in any of your minds, please, let's, uh, let's, let's, two weeks is all I'm asking. So we can maybe do it right. We want to do it one and done, and not have to go revisit it and all this. But again, if there's anything, please, please, go now. You know, if I may, do it right. I guess it's too big with the mic. I can tell you something. Do it right. We have a gentleman over here who got a couple of letters behind his name that we don't. I think with all due respect to Mr. Boyer, I think he's done it right. I think that we have a good piece of legislation in front of us. I do echo the concerns that you have, maybe not the concerns, I'm not going to elevate myself to saying it's a concern, including all rentals. I want that too. I want to have everybody included, but we have to start somewhere. There is nothing that says that we cannot institute this third reading today. It comes law and then we, we, we're off to the races, January first, twenty twenty-three, and we come back a year from now, maybe eighteen months from now, and we maybe go to phase two, phase three. I'm sorry.
We might not be in office.
That's, that's a possibility and so be it. But what I'm doing here today is I'm doing what's best, what I feel is best for the citizens of the city of North Canton, not to get myself reelected in a, what is it, another year.
I just don't.
I, I vote tonight with a clear conscience that I think we have a solid piece of legislation that is right. So that's it.
Just one comment. I think sometimes it's hard to know what's right. And we have an attorney that is guiding us and we have an administrator that, that are both working together to say what's right. But we may have to come back to see if we can come back with other things to figure out what's right. And that's what makes me go forward. I very much care, Emily, what you said tonight. And I, I question that as well, um, but I know we can change it and I'm okay with that. Um, and that is why we're committed to go forward.
You know what? I do have one thing to add because you, because, uh, I don't see nineteen seventy-eight in the, out of the audience. I think that's something we ought to look into, that ordinance from nineteen seventy-eight, maybe start enforcing that in conjunction with rental registration. So, um, absolutely.
Well, will this ordinance take the place of that?
No.
Functionally, of what, there's almost identical provision in this ordinance requiring landlords to provide tenants on a nanny basis.
Okay. Never received it, never ever got it.
Marsha did.
Marsha's out here.
Well, it's one percent.
But no, no discussion back before. Let's stop, let's stop it right now. All right, the motion on the floor was from John Orr and it was tabled. So suspended. Okay. So let's have a rule call on that motion, please.
Member Matheny?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Bolt?
No.
Member Schreier?
No.
Member Warrick?
No.
Member Warrick?
No.
Member McLeaster?
No.
Vote is two in favor, five against.
Would you like to make a motion to amend? This ordinance, uh, adding section seven oh three point oh three, four C. You'll notice that it is designated, or it is culminated on page three. Um, it should have it, should have it for you. And also to add, amend seven oh nine point nine nine A. Striking is guilty of a minor misdemeanor replaced by shall be subject to civil penalties as seen here again. Again, this is a motion to amend forty-three two zero two two.
Let's draw a second as opposed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
They voted aye.
We voted aye because.
Motion, that was a motion to amend. Now, we have.
That's illegal.
Okay. Now, I'm going to make a motion.
Well, let's try to call it a vote.
Motion carries seven up.
Make a motion to amend ordinance forty-three, or excuse me, motion to adopt the third reading of ordinance forty-three dash two zero two two as amended. So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five two. Moving on to new business, can I have a motion in the second to suspend Council Board twenty-four to allow for consideration ordinance twenty-four dash one twenty-two?
The vote moves second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
Uh, you've studied it a little bit.
Oh, sorry. I have a motion in the second to read my title only, ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-two, twenty-two.
The vote moves second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance amending chapter eleven thirty-six Main Street Districts Regulations of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, specifically accessory uses as listed in section eleven point three six, eleven thirty-six point oh five, in order to add thereto gasoline station as an accessory use requiring a conditional use permit in the Main Street North Gateway District.
As we heard in the public hearing, this is a request from Meyer to install this. It will move through the conditional use process. I should note that, uh, we have recently made adjustments to our Main Street zoning. One of the most recent ones was the permission to use or to install a drive-through. Shale Coffey is doing well. I think it illustrates the fact that we need to be flexible when we have opportunities. I would also note that contrary to, uh, some assertions, that, and I want to say this for the record, that I believe that Meyer would be a benefit to the community. When it comes, it will foster many new and unanticipated businesses. Largely ignored in some of the comments, but this, uh, fueling station may be part of that operation. There may be as much as six hundred thousand dollars of new real estate tax revenue generated by this project. That is not an inconsiderable amount of money. And I looked at the finance director, I believe about seventy percent of that will go to the schools. Is that correct? That's huge. And that benefits every residential taxpayer in this community. So having said that, is there anything else anyone needs to add?
Well, with that shale, they are doing well. They have not used.
They haven't opened it yet, but it was, it was coming into their, to their business plan, John.
They've not used it yet, but they're doing well and.
He needed it. He wanted it to get it open. So he has it. And that's a thorough investment. Helps drive the investment.
So, so plans for this will go to planning for conditional use, correct? And then come back to council? Is that correct?
No, there's a motion that only requires planning.
Okay.
Only DC.
Okay. And then the other comment I have is if you look at that area and gas stations, if you've ever been caught with somebody pulling out of the deep, the Soho BP station, um, and then trying to make left-hand turns out of this, I think this is actually going to free up traffic when it comes to getting gas in North Canton in that particular area by allowing access via another stoplight for right turns instead of left turns across poorly into traffic.
Agreed. Anything else? Thank you, David. Anything else? I move we adopt the first reading ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-two.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two, can I have a motion in the second to read my title only, ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two?
So I move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of North Canton to reclassify two thousand eight hundred and fifty parcels in the city of North Canton in accordance with the amendment procedures set forth in chapter eleven eighty-two of the Planning and Zoning Code in order to add to the zoning classification era of source water protection zoning openly district in order to protect the drinking water resources of the city of North Canton, Ohio.
James from the right side.
Thank you. All right, well, this is an item that we should all be well acquainted with. We talked about when we put the legislation through and we talked about it when we saw the map here just a couple of weeks ago. And as it said here in the packet, this print planning commission, they approved it unanimously. It is now back to, back here for us to book. So, um, I don't think we have anything from the administration to add. So I guess at this point I would, uh, move that we adopt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And moving on to department reports, uh, Deputy Director of Administration, would you like my?
I think I can reject loud enough. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, I just want to say, you know, to all the people that came tonight, you know, spoke at the podium about the, you know, water issues. Our department has heard from all of them and many more. So administration has taken numerous phone calls since Saturday, May fourteenth. And I just really want to give, uh, you know, a public recognition to Tracy Cole and Jennifer Cross, who fielded those frontline calls. And they listen to everybody and they're very empathetic and they have taken down all the information. And so, um, you know, definitely feel for what is going on and, and, um, you know, thank you for the people that came tonight. Um, operationally speaking, just wanted to note that we do have a, a new full-time hire who started today. His name is Mike Potter. He's not a hire of the city, uh, rather than he's a hire of SafeBuild. So he's a SafeBuild full-time compliance enforcement officer. We need that. We have one, uh, we have Bob Dobasak, and it's a lot of work for one person. So now he has a counterpart. So we have two people out there at our busiest time of the year when there's a lot of, uh, you know, weeds and grass and, you know, a lot of things that he tend to. So he'll be in a training stage for a while, but he will definitely be a welcome addition to the SafeBuild team. And, uh, we also have a lot of new faces with summer workers. Our sign on the portico must be working and net working or something. We're getting it out there. We're being a little more flexible. We used to always ask summer workers to work a street five day, or yeah, or work week. Now we're like, you know, if you need twenty hours, we do at twenty hours because these are younger individuals. They're home, uh, from college grade and we are hiring now also. We used to only hire over eighteen and now we're hiring some high school kids too, so under eighteen. And they probably have a lot of other commitments. But we need a lot of hands in the summer, uh, to work parks and rec and everywhere else, um, streets and anywhere that needs extra help. So again, keep networking if you know a better job, have them call us. Um, I also want to say great seven twenty event we had, I know who all went. I know I was there. It was a nice time, great weather, successful again. We put some colorful umbrellas on the portico tables. We left them up. They look nice. And, you know, uh, following that event, uh, the mayor and I joined, uh, Mr. Bruce Connery over at Dogwood Park in the playground. He was the gentleman that's family organized a GoFundMe account. I raised about fifteen thousand dollars by a piece of equipment. They bought the adaptive swing set and then they also had a little line left over to purchase an adaptive, um, picnic table under the shelter. So the weather held out nicely for us in order to have a really nice ceremony. His children were there. She, Becky Connery was a, a physical, pediatric physical therapist and she worked, uh, at Akron Children's Hospital and then most of her career at North Canton City Schools. So it just made sense, you know, it felt like her spirit was there, you know, that was her life's work. So we had a plaque put on that swing set and it has her designation as a COTA certified occupational therapist assistant. And, uh, bringing them on there and it said, may her life's work and her mission continue to, to be carried on. It was beautiful, emotional, and, um, we gathered around that swing set and we all joined hands. Prayer was said and in silence, we're back. It felt like her energy that was there. So that was a beautiful moment. And then following that, on the same day, I, uh, made it out to the North Canton Chambers Craft Beer Fest at MAPS. So that was a great event, great chamber event. First time I ever went to that. I'll definitely go again. So good day for the weekend. Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Catherine. Uh, Mayor?
Yes, thank you very much. And, uh,
it's good to have some summertime or springtime activities coming back to the city. Thanks for those comments about 720 market and of course the dedication ceremony that we had at our inclusive park. If you've ever been up there, there are people from all over the community outside of Stark County visiting this and they're very thankful that, uh, from our previous council and this council, that we could accomplish this project out of the pandemic. And one of our first priorities was to get this started. I also want to congratulate the 2022 graduates of their unpleasant evening for their graduation and of course I wish them all well. In regards to tonight, taking a moment to process the criticism and the feedback and suggestions is, uh, this takes time. It's very important to process what's been said, but also try to understand what our citizens have gone through. I appreciate everyone's feedback that came before us tonight. If I may, share with you, I understand how frustrating and disappointing this extreme severe weather experience has been for all of us. I too experienced the anguish of losing everything, personal possessions, appliances, home furnishings, mementos, sentimentism, Christmas ornaments, home furnishings, many, many things. And a basement due to heavy rains and flooding. I've been there. I've been up for three days also pumping water out of our backyard because we were at the low part and our, and our, uh, they were like, did my turn? Again, I can understand the anguish and the frustration. Where was the help from the city that we lived in at that time? It just wasn't there. Or how prepared were my parents for this catastrophic event that happened? So tonight, you've had an opportunity from our citizens, for all the council to hear and our, and for us to do our message out to our department heads to see how best we can address so that we don't have this disaster again. I'm sorry for the experience and, uh, and if I haven't met the expectations of our community serving as mayor. My statement, and I think just, I think people just need to be cognizant as to where they buy and where they live. And I don't mean that to be true and saying it. My statement was taken from a larger discussion with the repository. I learned from a tough experience and was simply trying to say how important it is finding out what the risks are to an individual's property and which combination of insurance and construction can mitigate a huge loss. I meant no disrespect to our residents, but I understand how it was viewed. I remain open for further questions and concerns or comments, how best we can be of assistance to any of these people who have been harmed by this storm in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Director for Director Finance, Gina.
Thank you. I have no report. I'll just give you a estimation of finance department is working to true up our April filing. We will have that information for great out reports to you in May for the May report for next month. Um, and also we are finishing up the audit report for 2021 audit year. So we will be reporting that to you within the next thirty days as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Aaron. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I have no report tonight either, other than I'd just like to thank everyone that did come out and speak. They have no idea how valuable every bit of information is to help us go forward and, uh, see what we can come up with as far as solutions to the events that we have. And if there's any questions that any, any of you have, please reach out to me.
Thank you, Rod. Uh, Director of Law, would you like to comment on this?
I have your report. Thank you.
Counselor, Ben?
I just have one quick thing. As someone brought up during public speech, we do try to put a lot of effort into making our website look nice. And I have to announce that after about six months of partnership with me and members of the administrative team, uh, our brand new redesigned website will launch this Wednesday. So from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, our website will be down on Wednesday, May 25th. And then if, when it comes back up, it will be our beautiful new redesign. Uh, during this outage, anybody who for any reason may need to pay utility bill or pay for permit or, uh, wants to rent a facility, those are all still, those will all continue to function as long as you have a direct link to get there instead of trying to go to our homepage and then click on all that kind of thing. Uh, we did put out an email last this morning that included those direct links. Um, so hopefully people who may need them back.
Thank you, Gina. Okay, moving on to council reports. Let's just go to the end and I'll have you pass it down here.
Pass it down. All right. Actually, Ben, like you mentioned the, the website, uh, I guess I was going to bring that up, uh, just thinking about my time on the City Service Committee way back when. That was what, you know, 2011, 12, 13? Mary, I don't remember what year that was, but I remember we talked about the website. So I was super excited to see it on Facebook, uh, today. So looking forward to seeing that later this week. I also want to address, uh, people who came in here and talked about the flooding. Uh, to say my heart goes out to you is an absolute understatement. Um, seeing the videos on Facebook, the photos, um, the millers that were here earlier, um, she called me and said, "I have three sheds in my front yard." And I, I, it took me a second to process what she was telling me. And I'm like, well, I have to see this with my own eyes and, you know, stopped out and saw it. And then to meet the neighbor behind them. Yeah, my heart goes out to you and although we don't have answers tonight, hopefully, as the mayor said, you know, in due time, we can, we can work through this. But, uh, thanks for all those who spoke this evening. That's it.
So I'll echo what everyone's probably wanting to say here. Our hearts break for everyone who was affected by the flooding. Um, when we came in tonight, I said to President Stroya, like, you know, these are, I know all of these people sitting up here and these are good people who give back to the community and just support people in need and who have really big hearts. So, um, while I don't know what the answer is, I can tell you that these people care about finding answers and improving things and hopefully, you know, being able to promote this happen again. Um, so yeah, there's that. Then on a completely different topic, the Dogwood Pool opens on Saturday. So, um, that's exciting. It's going to be cold, but Sunday, Monday will pass. So that's the parks report.
That is good news. Good news also. Um, yeah, thank you to everybody who spoke. Uh, I'm so, 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 so sorry that you had to go through that. Um, MAPS in-laws had called me and I went down on that Sunday and saw a good deal of, uh, damage at that station. And that was a run wise. And, uh, and they were, they didn't come tonight. Um, and that was the first time I learned that people didn't have insurance money, um, for this, that flood wasn't covered. Um, and I was shocked and, um, just so sad. And then to hear people get up today and show us pictures of the devastation is, it's, uh, it's, it's very sad and horrible. So I hope that we as a city can work with hopefully other government officials and different agencies and move up the ladder to, uh, try to have other partners help us and, and, uh, not let this happen again. Um, so thank you for everybody who came early and spoke and, uh, we can do our best to help.
I'd echo, uh, council seminar regarding residents who came up tonight. But what I'd ask the council president, the administration, is that if we can schedule, uh, sometime our next council hall for a brief update on kind of what, uh, what meaningful steps may have been taken here or what kinds of projects we're looking at, conducting right now. And then, and I know this is going to be difficult, but what is, what does our plan for the way forward look like? What are a couple of those? This is kind of a non-binding, non-binding, uh, conversation, thank you. But I think we need to, we need to get our arms in the direction we're going to go. Um, we're, we've got according to the meeting calendar, we've just got a couple of layup council meetings left before we go summer recess. So if we need to take the option, we can add, but it'd be nice if we need to do something. Double up and get it done. So I think we owe that to, and to the residents. Thank you.
So as personnel safety committee chairperson, we don't have an actual report for that, but I did want to say thanks to Ms. Farina for all of her work and effort to fill those open positions. In my professional career right now, I have open positions and I can't find people. So good job on finding creative ways to fill those part-time positions for the summer. I think that's wonderful. I am touched deeply for everybody that spoke tonight and spoke on behalf of others and everybody that sustained loss in the flooding that took place. Uh, those that spoke were very eloquent in their words and very passionate. And, um, it leads me to take some action. I have boxes in my basement that are full of memories of my mother that I can't bring myself to go through. And they're going to be out of the way with future flood in my basement should that occur. So it doesn't help those that is to sustain that loss, but I think everybody should take note of that. I do know that this council and this administration is going to be committed to finding ways to work through these issues and then we'll come up with positive results.
Thank you. Okay. Um, again, I echo what everyone else has said. Thank you for everyone who came and spoke. The realtors that spoke and people spoke about the, uh, runoff registration. Appreciate it. I had flooding in my house back in 2011 and 2012 and we lost a lot of things. And right now they're feeling the pain. That pain, it takes a lot of time to go away, but it will go away and we'll be stronger. But this council, I, I believe in this administration will work very hard to find some solutions. And it does take some time. So I took a lot of calls in the last week about the runoff registration. I took a lot of calls about some flooding. All the people that were here, there's probably 10 times that amount of people that probably weren't affected. So if we can get their names and their addresses, you know, we can get out there and help them. The, the gutters, I, I, hopefully we'll get out there and clean them because there's several of them in the southwest end that really need some attention. Thank Dominic for all the emails and pictures and stuff like that. But that's all that's happening. We're for, but again, thank you guys for being discreet. We're here just about every Monday. So we invite you back. So thanks.
Um, yeah, I just want to repeat what has been said a lot here. Uh, sympathetic to, and, uh, this time I'm more empathetic to, to the flooding. It's heartbreaking. It is. You, you don't want to see your, your friends and family or, or, you know, fellows go through any of that. That's awful. The only thing we can do is, is evaluate and, and discuss, and hopefully we can find some support. I've never, I've talked to a meteorologist friend and we had four to five inches by his estimates in 40 minutes, which is the equivalent to the front end of a hurricane in some circumstances. That's unreal to even think of. But yet this localized storm, it didn't even rain north of, of the, of the mall. I mean, that's just, it's, it's very frustrating to, to think I'll just sat on this and did all this. It's seeing the pictures and talking to the people, it is truly heartbreaking. Moving on, I want to say congratulations to the, um, the, uh, the new graduates or, or whoever that just got to go through their severance ceremony. It's hard to even think of other stuff after, after just talking to everybody after this flood. So, um, I'm just going to wrap it up and say, "Finance support." Looking forward to the meeting calendar here. Uh, we'll have no meeting on May 30th, uh, Memorial Day. Coming back after that, we'll have a committee on which we will have a discussion on updates of the flood plans. Followed by June 13th, we'll have a regular city council meeting. We will not have a meeting on June 20th, but it'd be, uh, June 13th, which is a national holiday. And then on the 27th, we may be doubling up on a meeting of, of committee at the whole and regular. So I want to make sure you know that. Then we have, uh, that following Monday is Fourth of July, so we will not be meeting there. And then currently we have July 11th is our last meeting before we hit summer recess. Is there any discussion you want to have on summer recess? The dates, you don't have to have that now. We can discuss this later because that's the July, but when does it?
Should we just put like, we're moving on, so there is a majority of us that are bottom of a certain day, that maybe it's an extra week we wait before we take it in or I don't, I don't know.
That's a good idea.
Just, just so that if we were all going to be missing, say, I don't even know, the next week, that maybe we start. Something like that, exactly.
Okay. How about, could, could you submit any, any days that you know that you're going to take off for vacation?
Yes.
Potentially that would affect this summer break. Does that sound fair?
Yep.
When is summer break supposed to come?
So.
21st of August, I think.
The 20th, is it? Did you ever count that?
Uh, we would return. It's traditionally the last two weeks, the last first two weeks of August, we would return August 15th.
Okay. All right. So keep that in mind. If you guys could get that to me, I would appreciate that. Anything else?
President's parade.
Sure.
The Lions, uh, North Canton Lions are sponsoring the Memorial Day Parade that starts at nine o'clock. And it'll come, uh, end at the Bitzer Park. We're anticipating it for about an hour. And we would have a memorial service at Bitzer Park approximately 10 o'clock in the morning. But the Lions are sponsoring the, uh, our North Canton Memorial Day Parade. And just want to make sure that was noted for the public.
Excellent. Thank you. I did, uh, did bring up something for me. The fishing radio, do we have details on that? That's the.
That's this Saturday.
Yeah. Do we, do, do they register? Is there anything you need to talk about for that?
They'll show up that morning. There's no pre-registration for that.
Okay.
It's open only to North Canton City School children. And, uh, I think it's like second to seventh grade, ten girls.
Eight to nine is registration.
Eight to nine, okay.
And we'll, we'll kick it off at nine o'clock. It'll probably go until about 11:00. And it's for our North Canton students in our school district, lead age two to 12.
Okay.
Okay. And.
sponsored by North Canton Eagles.
Sponsored by the North Canton Eagles. And, uh, uh, the time is stopped, is stopped.
All right.
Be there or be square.
All right. Uh, let's take the motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?